Committee tonight, let's start, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance later when we start at seven. Right now, we're gonna break to go into an executive session. I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move that we go to executive session.
For the purposes of...
It's on the thing.
Contract negotiations.
I'm not on yet, hold on.
Do you have, can you re...
I can.
Contract negotiations.
Contract negotiations, thank you.
Okay.
Seconded by Ms. Badger, I need a roll call. Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
We will be back at seven. Thank you for coming to the school committee meeting tonight. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize, we ran over with our executive session. Before we get started, I'd like to start with a moment of silence. Ask for a moment of silence for Tom Gallacher, Charles Tom Gallacher. He was a Spanish teacher, passed away recently. He served us for 12 years and he was, as I mentioned, a Spanish teacher at Plymouth South High School. So if we can take a moment to reflect on him, please. Thank you. And now, is there anybody here that wants to comment to the school committee tonight? Seeing nobody, move on to our South High School first.
Okay.
Our update, sorry.
On January 26th, we had a very successful tech expo for the incoming seventh and eighth graders from both Pluma South, Pluma South Middle School and PCIS. Also, on Tuesday night was our eighth grade parent orientation, which highlighted next year's schedule and the available courses to the incoming freshmen. Also, last Thursday, we had our National Honor Society induction, so that was great for all the juniors who were inducted and some seniors as well. Report cards went out on Friday, so make sure that you start second semester off on a good foot. Senior scholarships are due on Wednesday. Make sure your application is proofread and complete, this is a great way to help pay for college. Believe it or not, caps and gowns will be ordered soon, along with many other senior activities going on. The annual advanced placement breakfast will be Thursday morning. All AP students are required to wear the shirts they received today or on Friday. The shirts themed this year is Star Wars. Honor science students will be competing at the Plymouth Public Schools townwide science fair next Tuesday. Good luck to all. Also, next Tuesday will be the Skills USA Dinner. Beginning on Friday, student council will be selling crushes for $1 at lunches. All crushes will be delivered during K Block on Friday, February 12th. The student council executive board has also just passed in their book of excellence to the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils. Last year, we were able to achieve gold status and we are hoping for the same this year. Lastly, our sports, all teams are doing great this year. Three track students were able to win their events at the Massachusetts Coaches All-State Meet. At that meet, Devon Leahy also received the title of outstanding competitor for the results he had in his races. Finally, the North-South hockey game will be next Friday at the Armstrong Rink and we encourage you all to attend.
Thank you, Bria. Isabel, North?
Hi, so our student athletes of the week were Jackie Sullivan and Josh Postana. Both are on winter track and they both qualified for state meets, as well as receiving the Patriot League All-Stars and league MVPs, so those are very big honors. Our eighth grade open house will be on Thursday, February 4th, from 6 to 8, so this will allow students to get a tour of the building and see what clubs and sports are offered. Our report cards were distributed last Friday, January 29th, and next Friday, February, or this Friday, February 5th, the sales and caps and gowns will begin, and the cost is $25, either a check or money order. The local scholarship application due date was extended, so you have to have all the applications in by Wednesday, February 3rd. And we have our administrative breakfast on Thursday, February 11th, in the cafeteria at 8:00. And biology MCAS retakes began today and they'll continue on to Tuesday, February 2nd, and a makeup day on Wednesday, February 3rd. Winter break will begin on Monday, February 15th, and we have finally chosen a date for our junior prom. It will be on Friday, May 27th, at the Lake Pearl in Rentham. And today, we had all of the diploma forms distributed to the senior class, so they should be filled out and completed by the student and the student's parent or guardian, and returned to Mrs. Fullitt in the main office before our February break.
Very good, thank you. I like that twist the hair thing you have. Very nice. Okay. Old business, I know we have an update, right? We're gonna talk about it later, though, as a, as an actual item, right? Okay. So it's there. New business, any new business? Swinging back to the old business again, so old business item, the student data privacy and Google apps for education in Chromebooks. Julia, I think. Dr. Maestis, you wanna tee it up?
Yes.
Sorry.
I think we missed an agenda item, but...
Did I?
Yeah.
What did I, I did new business?
Oh, it is. Okay, I should know this. Okay, so this is what we have. We have Julia Colby, she's our coordinator of technology for the district, and Julia sat with us, we discussed an old business item that had to do with privacy of student information, and it had to do with when our kids log into Google and they login and where does their information go? How do we secure that and what type of systems do we have with the amount of software that we share in our district? And I think there's a lot of discussion, one of our parents and one of our school councils mentioned that there was a level of discussion at their school council regarding how student information is actually handled by these companies. So we had Julia go back and she created a document that I think you've seen her packet tonight, and she is here tonight to present to you some information on the partners that we have in our district that help us to deliver content to our students and also content but services. And so I'll turn it over to Julia and she can walk through the information she has tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So what I'd like to do is just start with an overview of the document that you have on electronic school board and that's up there. Page one focuses on the settings for Chrome. There's user settings for Chrome and there's device settings for the Chromebooks. So just these two different types of settings, there's over 100 settings. So I went through every single one of them when we went live with the Chromebooks. And then I met with Alan and we went over them and we picked what is, you know, the safest for the students. And then, once we decided and we put those into effect, we met with the librarians, the technicians, the tech integration specialists, and we went over all the settings with them so they were aware of, you know, what kind of settings are there for the students, so if something would happen. Some of the ones that I'll just key is if a student logs in to Chrome, they are given a set of apps and extensions, so they can't just go and download anything. So when they log in, they're given the ones that we've chosen, we've met as a department and we've chosen, you know, select ones. They also, their local user data is erased, so when they log out, it's all gone, so nobody can get back in and look at their user data. If they're on one of our Chromebooks, their sign-in is restricted to the two domains, either the faculty domain or the student domain. And again, their local user data is erased on the Chromebooks. And we have it set so that when the Chromebook is shut down, all of the data is erased. On page two, we just talk about the different apps, the core apps, such as Google Mail. We have that turned on for students in grade seven through 12. However, the grade seven and eight mail is restricted to only in the two domains, the faculty domain and the student domain and Aspen, so they can't send an email anywhere else for seventh and eighth. We have it turned on for high school, obviously, you know, if they use it for getting ready for college and things like that. Plus, you have to teach them, you know, what's safe, what isn't safe. So there is also, I listed more information, there's some great Google sites that talk about the security of Google and they're good for parents to go on. The google.com/edu/trust has a lot of good information about how Google handles the data. Also, there's information, firpasherpa.org has a lot of information on there for parents, what rights they have. If you look at page three, these are our core Google apps and every core app has settings with it. So we, again, we went through all of the settings and we have turned on specific things, turned off specific things, all based on, you know, security for the students. Page four, this is where it talks about what Google does. And I took this, the sources listed there, the google.com/edu/trust, so it talks about does Google own the school or student data? No. Does Google sell it to third parties? They do not. Are there ads in Google apps for education? No. And then it talks about how Google keeps the data secure. But what some people don't realize is if you create your own Google account, like a Gmail account, it's very different from our accounts that we have at school with the Google apps. There's no ads, they don't mine the data, there's 24/7 phone and email support, we get additional storage, but we have full administration of those accounts. So if there is ever a problem with any of the student accounts, we have the right to go in it because we own their, their accounts. If they use their own personal Gmail, we don't have that right, so that's another feature in the Google apps. And then page five talks about what does Google do for the student privacy pledge. This was something that has been created by the Future Privacy Forum and President Obama backs this. There's over 200 companies right now that have signed it, Microsoft's has signed it and Google has signed it. And it talks there about what is actually in that pledge, so that they don't collect, maintain, use or share personal data, they don't sell the student personal information. So there is a big push right now by education organizations out there to protect the data of students. And the FIRPA Act, I think that goes back to like 1974, like, did we even have computers back? Like, 1974? So when you think about it, it really does need an update and they do have to put restrictions on these companies and what they're doing with the data. And so what does Plymouth do? In the K through 5, all of the elementary tech integration specialists in the September-October timeframe, they do go over internet safety and they do cover what to put in your Google docs. You know, you have to, you have to make sure that you, you tell these students, not only the students, but tell the teachers to reinforce it with the students. You don't want to put your social security number out there, you don't want to put any kind of personal information out in anything in the cloud, whether it's school docs or Office 365 or Dropbox. So they do have the lessons for the students. The grade eight enrichment class, the students have, and that, I actually was at one of them and the students were pretty interested in the whole discussion, so they were informed of it. I have started newsletters to staff and last year, I met with Alan and we did a sheet on password tips and how to detect fraudulent email. And then this past fall, I focused on tips for storing data in the cloud, what to put in the cloud, what not to put in the cloud. And then Plymouth Public Schools, as you know, enlists professionals. In September, Katie Greer was here for both the middle school and high school. She talked about internet safety, digital privacy, things like that. So the last part was what can anyone do? And this is just more for people at home, parents, there's two sites there that can give them more information, but some of the things that are really important for students are to personalize their settings, not only in Google, but they can't really personalize much of their settings in Google because we control that. But if they have their own Google account, they really should be going on and personalizing their settings, their Facebook, their Twitter, anything like that. And then clearing your caches is important. If you're doing something like online banking or anything, college applications where you're putting in information, if you clear your cache, it wipes it all out of there. So those are just things that we can, we can tell the students and try to get them educated on it. What can we improve on? We will start working on some documents when the information is given to the students, like maybe a bulleted list of what we want to make sure that we tell them. And we are going to update our website that we've built for teachers with more information on the digital privacy, things like that. And that's it. So if there's any questions, I know it's a lot of information...
Tom first? So is this gonna be shared with the parents, this document? Is that what you said?
What I would recommend is that we would put this on our school websites.
Okay.
And that way, the parents could have access to that and just the general public, as far as, you know, we, we have a significant relationship and motivation with Google and if, to be honest with you, if it wasn't for Google, I think that we would not be able to reach students and merge this technology gap without them. So we, the conversation, I learned a lot by, you know, listening to the research that Julia did and it seems that they really have become a partner with education. So I think this kinda outlines exactly what that means.
It would be a good workshop topic for our parents.
It will be.
I have one more really quick question. So coincidence, I had a parent actually contact me this week. Middle school parent, sixth grader, saying, "I just bought, I'm trying to do everything I can to help my child who's struggling, I bought them a Chromebook. How do I set up and configure the Chromebook so that it mimics what they need in school?"
This is great. All they have to do is log in with their Google ID from school...
The apps and everything?
And they'll get, they'll be limited.
Okay.
Which is really, we've had a parent complain about that because they said, "We got a Chromebook for our son and now we're limited."
Yeah, 'cause that's what I thought, it's cloud-based.
And we said, "Well, you're limited because you're on our domain."
Okay.
But if they log on to our domain...
Yep.
It's, they're gonna get all the security that we have.
I had told them pretty much this, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
And then I also gave them the name of the tech, the integration person, in case they had another question, but she might be killing me if I keep giving her name out, I don't know. So that's good. And it's just a coincidence that I just heard this week from a parent, so there are parents out there. I bought a Chromebook for my daughter last year, too, so, and I wanted to make sure that she...
Right, so when your daughter logs on, you'll see like the wallpaper comes up and then it's, you'll get the apps that we have put on there.
I know she's even logged into mine and it defaults sometimes to hers when I'm trying to. All right, that's good advice, thank you.
We add apps based on if we believe that we can support them, because there's some third-party apps, there's some Google endorsed, you know, they're all endorsed by Google, otherwise they wouldn't be there, but we want to make sure that if we're gonna have it on as an option, that we can support it.
Yeah, no matter what device you use, as long as you login as their school ID, then all these apps will be available to them. And that's really good for them to know. That's what I thought, too, but I just wanted to make sure I wasn't giving out bad information. All right, thank you.
Ms. Badger?
I had the same question as Kim, the first one, but I did want to say thank you for putting this together because it was a big topic at our Pluma South Middle School Council one night, so just hoping that we can get that out to...
Yeah.
To the prin, well, obviously, the principals probably know, but getting it out and just like pushing it out that way through social media or some way, maybe your Friday notes as well.
We'll do that.
Just so that they, you know, can click on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julia.
All right, so now we can get on my schedule.
I'm a little bit off. I have a few things to report on tonight. The school committee will have an opportunity to go to South High School on Saturday. I would, it's, might cool off a little by then and we're gonna walk around a little bit, so be prepared for that. In addition, as a result of the warmer-than-normal temperatures this week, we're going to be pouring concrete on the third floor, which is, we weren't gonna do it until the spring, but it looks like we'll have three, three days of 40-degree temperatures and that's what's needed to actually pour, so that'll be happening, I believe, tomorrow. So that'll be pretty interesting, you might have an opportunity to have some concrete under you.
And Rich, you gonna be there? You're invited, if you...
Possibly my boss.
Okay.
So, and we have invited the building committee, so we'll do that first, get things out of the way and then, and we'll go inside. So we'll, we'll start with that on, on Saturday. Tonight, I just want to give the committee a, an update on what's happening with wastewater. I know, you know, I never thought I'd be talking about wastewater at school committee, but I went to a meeting this morning with town department heads, town manager and all the subcontractors with this sewer break, wastewater break. So we, we actually, there are three different breaches of the wastewater system and they are being repaired, not repaired, but a diversion is, is being installed to actually get around those. So we have worked with and continue to work with Town Hall to send out correspondence every day as to updates regarding road situations. I think some of you realize Summer Ave is closed, we've had some diversions there based on work that's happening. In addition, there will probably be some disruption to Exit 5 and 6 and as soon as that information is solidified, I will send it out to the community. In addition, I've talked to Mr. Costin earlier today and if there are any major bus delays or issues, we will work with the first student to manage those. It does look like it's going to take quite a, an effort to get this bypass complete. It'll, it's about another 5,000-plus feet of pipe that needs to put down, it's actually two sections, side by side, so it's a big job. It's, you know, it's, I tell you, I'm very proud to be working with our DPW director, I mean, to see crisis management in action and Melissa Ray, the town manager, and everyone at the table working to try to just get this thing done. It's a, it's a, it's a big feat. So just to let you know, I will be, putting information out through our communication means, we'll get it to you as soon as we get it, all right? So...
I appreciate that report. So I, I'm thinking of, there's a rather large bus stop on Summer Street and Billington C Road.
Mm-hmm.
That is in the closed-down section right now.
Mm-hmm.
And then, of course, Sleepy Hollow Drive is right at the beginning of that section.
Mm-hmm.
Are we having to move bus stops, is my question?
Well, what they're indicating is though that will open up and they couldn't give a timeline. The project manager for the contractor is putting together a very detailed schedule and as soon as we have that schedule, we'll be sitting down with the bus company to figure that out. We do have the ability to have buses waved through, but again, we need to find out exactly what those issues will be in the morning, but we'll be communicating with first student.
I didn't, I didn't take it, somebody in my house took it, but there was an all-call tonight that came out, not from the school department, I think, but it came out from the town.
Yeah, a, a reverse 911 call went out tonight and it was just to the residents of the impacted area. So they got calls, I don't, I don't know what the transcript of that call was, but it was gonna go out tonight letting them know that there, there were gonna be some disruptions in traffic and they would give updates. What we're gonna do and what I would urge the general public, when they get these updates from our social media means, they may want to forward that along to their, to their family members that are living in, it's, it's gonna be more of a central north Plymouth problem than it is in south Plymouth.
I said Billington C Road, I meant Morton Park Road.
Yeah.
That's closed right now. So as a school department, will we, when this more detailed information comes out about when, when roads are closed and school buses are moved, because buses can't get to that spot.
Yeah.
Will we then send out a call to those families?
Absolutely. And we've been in situations when we have, we've had roads closed and we do, we're familiar with that, that action. So again, we will work with first student. As soon as we get information, we'll get it right to the, to the bus company. I tell you, the, the DPW and emergency management's been very responsive and they want us to, to know this right away so that we can get it out to our families. But like I said, if people could just send it along, get it out to people, the more people that know, I think the less confusion there'll be. Accurate information is important as well.
And so far, besides the obvious impact transportation, there's no impact to any of our buildings or anything?
No, the flow normals are, are gonna continue, you know, so they're just asking people to minimize water usage, which would minimize drain usage, which would cause wastewater. So it, it really is, they're managing and they're doing a good job, their plan is working. It's just, I'm sure we'll have updates as to, you know, the stage of, of full operation. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's, that's what I have.
That was it?
Yeah.
And we're also, we're gonna assist with the town as far as getting the word out.
Yeah, we, we, we'll be working with the assistant town manager to forward out and relay press releases and pertinent information in minutes of when we receive them. So as long as it takes to post it after we get it, it's gonna be, as soon as we get it, it'll be out there.
That's good. Glad we were able to help them with that. Dr. Gould, I don't think there were any retirements.
We do have one, we have one. We have Laurie Harris, who worked for Mr. Costin and is an accounting clerk for the grants and revolving accounts, will retire actually this Friday after 12 years of service to the district. We'll miss her at central office, but wish her well.
Ms. Badger?
On behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, I'd like to thank Ms. Harris for her 12 years of service to the district and wish her a wonderful retirement.
Yes.
And correspondence?
There was, there's no correspondence tonight.
And that brings us up to our school improvement plan update from Indian Brook Elementary School. Principal Harold with his team.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Okay. 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 around ELA and some of the focuses we've had. I have to be honest with you, and I know some of the teachers here can talk about this. I was a little bit panicked myself in the fall because our MCAS data, before we switched over to PARK, has not exactly been on that upward trend, because it kind of flattened out. And I was getting nervous because we've put all these initiatives around the differentiated workshop model, and all of our energy, and all this cooperative, and started getting a little nervous. So I was extremely ecstatic, and I know the staff knows, I conveyed it to them for all their hard work, how well we did do as we looked at that transition to PARK, when you compare it to the state as well as our district. So, and again, I shared the results tonight. So just to highlight a few things related to Goal One around the ELA piece, one of the things, as I mentioned, around the training, and I can't say enough about our two consulting teachers of literacy, Rebecca Sader and Amy Baldwin, as well as our reading coach, Jen Jaeger. They have been phenomenal in supporting the teachers, as well as the teachers. They, I mean, our staff jumped on board with it. They've been running with it ever since, and they, I can speak, actually, I've had a conversation recently with Jen Jaeger, and, I mean, they're seeking her out regularly for support. So it's really nice that cooperative structures that we put in place, not only in the classroom with the students, but in our building with all of our teachers. One of the biggest things we did do for the current year is, we have two consulting teachers of literacy. And just like ourselves, it's much easier if we can concentrate on certain grade levels, because then we become more of an expert, shall we say, with those standards with the Common Core. So we restructured our two staff, Rebecca Sader and Amy Baldwin, and we basically have Ms. Sader doing K to Two, and Ms. Baldwin doing grades three to five. So it really helps in that they can then have more expertise for those teachers in those grade levels, plus they have a better understanding of the books and so forth that can support those programs. So that was really a big benefit. That's helped to keep things more streamlined within the school and those supports. The other thing, as I said, the embedded professional development, Jen Jaeger, I cannot say enough about her. She has been a phenomenal resource. Her knowledge is just endless, and her ideas, you know, you ask her to do something, you meet with her, and it's done. It's phenomenal. One of the things that we started talking about some years ago, Jen and I are talking, we talked about alternative assessments, because we know our assessments today that we're dealing with, such as PARK, are not the traditional assessments that I grew up with, where it was basically computation, very factual kinds of information. So looking at things through that application structure, she's done a phenomenal job with her colleague Natalie, who have overseen the Plymouth literacy website, and they have a wealth of alternative assessments now for teachers to look at for all of the units of study throughout the reading. So it's really been a phenomenal transition to the entire process. Also, as I said, the, one of the other things that we started a few years ago, and we kind of targeted even more so this year, and again, Ms. Sader and Ms. Baldwin are overseeing that, is every unit in the area of writing, there's, there's X number of units of which they have different types of writing, nonfiction, so forth, that each grade level hits upon throughout the course of the year. We chose a couple of those writing samples that each teacher then gets together and collaboratively take a look at, not their grade, I mean, not their class, excuse me, but another class, so they can kind of get a baseline as to see what other students are doing within the grade level, but also kind of that, I mean, everybody needs that self-check, so to speak, to see, geez, am I on target as to what I see my students doing versus other students in the grade level? Then they have an opportunity to share out with that information. So again, it's just another way of taking a look at some of that information, that data, and how it supports the improvement for our students. So as you look at the second slide, you kind of take a look at, at a glance, how we fared against the district as well as the state. I did put in there, and I wanted to make sure that I was aware of it, that I looked at it from the computer-based version. I'm sure a lot of you have heard a lot of information about the various testing. We had MCAS, which we had the highest performance rate in the state. Then we had the paper and pencil, which they did a little bit better than those students who took the computer-based. So I think it's significant, when you take a look at the data, and you see collectively between the top two tiers, what they're looking for, which is basically a proficient rating, how Indian Brook fared in ELA in grades three, four, and five amongst the state. As I said, they were really significantly higher in all three categories, I mean, all three grade levels. So I said, it was a very impressive feat that the teachers, and it's, again, from their work through just providing those, those students with those alternative ways of looking at information through that differentiated workshop model. So I applaud them. Any questions on Goal One? I'm sorry. I'm trying to, I'm trying to be good.
You're doing good.
Looking at our second goal, which is again, taking a look at the academics, but more specific to the area of math. Math, I'm not going to hide, it's a little more difficult. We don't have those embedded people, such as the reading coaches, that we can rely on in, to support some of the math, but we do have Jen Powers, and she's around as much as she can. She's done a lot of work this year with the teachers. They did a concentration with the lower grades last year because we had the EM4 rollout in the primary grades, and now this year, they finished that rollout of EM4 into the upper elementary. So there's been a little bit more of a focus on those grade levels to support them, to get up to speed. It's totally aligned to the Common Core, so in that respect, it's been very beneficial in those supports. There's also been a lot of work. I know recently, we did a lot of inventory to make sure that all of our now support materials are up to date, and I'm referring to the hands-on materials. And again, she's been instrumental in supporting that. She put out a survey for inventory to all the teachers to make sure that everybody has all the tools necessary to support those new program supports connected to everyday math. The other thing, the other two items of which, well, I'm sorry, the math coach, the DDM online piece, but the other big thing is the first steps. I'm sure you've heard about the first steps trainings that's been going on. I actually took the course many years ago myself. Many of our teachers, I know Ms. Canducci and so forth, have gone through it, but it's been, it's again, it's another way of looking at how to support children in that workshop model, because it takes a look at where they are developmentally versus just where they are, where you think they should be because of their grade level. So it's a great source to support both that pre-assessment to determine who needs the greatest support when you come to that unit of math, and then taking a look at how the results fared when you take a look at those end results at the end of that unit. So again, that's been a big initiative. I know there's another training coming up now for teachers going forth, sub is permitting. But it's been difficult. But as I said, that has been a wonderful feature. And again, looking at the next slide, taking a look at how Indian Brook fared against Plymouth as well as Massachusetts, again, taking a look at the computerized base version. Although we did have a slight slip in fourth grade, you can see that, and that is a larger number of special needs students, I will say, in the fourth grade last year, moving on to fifth grade, but still, percentageally speaking, we exceeded both the district as well as the state. So again, I applaud the teachers. It's not like I'm in the classroom doing it, they're in the classroom doing it. So they've done a phenomenal job of taking those initiatives, applying them in the classroom, and as, again, I think we're seeing it through the supports and the outcomes. Okay. Any questions on Goal Two? Okay, thank you. I'm going to pass the mic then to Ms. Sherri Lawrence, actually.
Thank you. Goal Three is near and dear to my heart with community engagement, having the ability to serve on the strategic planning committee. We've been able to take what we did there and bring it into the building, both as a PTA and as a school council. So we have been focusing on getting the word out on what the teachers are teaching in the classroom, what the students are doing as their school projects or after-school activities and so on and so forth. We've been working collaboratively, using Blackboard Connect, and getting the word out through, through the PACE messaging, and, and, and really utilizing all of the forms of communication quite effectively, so that we feel a lot more engaged within the school community. The new open house format, we ended up doing a single grade each night, and that allowed us to really focus our energy to be more grade-specific. Probably next year, we will go back to a model where we're doing two grades a night, simply because six nights was a little too much. We are happy to see that there are 19 teachers who are currently using teacher webpages in order to communicate what's going on in the classroom, and that there are 11 teachers using ClassDojo to monitor student behavior and, and to make sure that everybody continues on the path that they need to go on. As far as the PTA partnership, we have been averaging at least an event a month, if not more. I am happy to say that we have over 100 members of the PTA at Indian Brook, who are paid members, including teachers. We've had the largest teacher engagement in the PTA in years, so we're thrilled about that. We have engaged over probably close to 1,000 people over the course of the four months' worth of events. Probably it's, it's similar families coming out, but to have that type of engagement with our Fall Festival, Casino Night, Holiday Festival, Book Bingo, our Curriculum Apps program, Post-a-Night, Science Night, we have Paint Night coming up, and so on and so forth. So we are really focusing on providing good activities for the, for the Indian Brook school community. One of the major initiatives that we have, if we go to the next slide, is our playground renovation initiative. We, we know that our current playground is not really up to par. It is at a point where the brackets are no longer able to be repaired, and we've made as many repairs as we can. We currently have a situation where many kindergartners are not allowed on part of the equipment because it is just not safe. So in honor of the 40th anniversary of Indian Brook for September of 2016, we are being rather bullish about going after getting a new playground built in time for the start of the new school year, with the expectation that the town will agree to allow full-day kindergarten, so that kindergarten will have a playground that they can play on. It will be a gift from the community and from the PTA to Indian Brook, and, and that's why we're looking at it as a 40th anniversary celebration, and, and we're hopeful, as a PTA, to really use the next year to celebrate the 40th anniversary of the school. With the playground renovation initiative, I am leading a committee of roughly 12 people. We have done engagement through a school survey, where 76 families took part online to share their, their input about where we need to go with our playground. Our renovation goal is to have a playground where every young scholar can learn, grow, and play. And as I said, we hope to have it installed in August of this year, ahead of the start of the school year. On the next slide, we list our current challenges, where the current equipment was installed in 1999. It's not able to be repaired. The main play structure not safe, and it's too small for the current class sizes. There are people who are actually waiting to use the equipment in their limited recess time, and, and that's a waste of time. The play structure is not ADA compliant, and it's also installed in an area prone to erosion and ground issues. So we are taking this as an opportunity on the, on the next slide to create something that will hopefully last. We are looking at this as a once-in-a-generation opportunity to offer a, a resource to the community, not only for the Indian Brook families, but also during the non-school hours for other families as well, to have a place to go for mobility-impaired students, but also we are looking at zones for sensory, sensory integration, as well as for places of imagination for the littlest of, of students. The equipment is geared for core strength building, social skill building, imagination, creativity, and fun, and it will meet all current safety standards. On the next slide, we are looking at doing zones of play for small group engagement, more equipment choice so that the students will be able to actually play. And, and there will be a piece in the back corner, it looks like a spider web type of thing, but that piece is actually going to get voted on by the students at the school. We are gonna give them a choice of three different options, and we are going to aim to have that election be held on Feb. 29, ahead of the primary. So we'll be able to incorporate that into the curriculum. When I also mentioned about the school survey, all the students are also being surveyed either in the classroom or in the cafeteria to see what they would like to see happen there as well. Our goal for this fundraising campaign is $70,000. The equipment itself is, is pricing in at roughly $42,000. That spider web piece in the, in the back, depending on what they vote on, it ranges between $14,000 and $17,000. The, the safety flooring, if we go with a, with a wood chip mulch composite, that's probably gonna be about $4,500. But in our recent school survey, parents had indicated that they would like to see the poured rubber or, or something along those lines, but that gets pricey, that's pricing in at about $42,000. So if the money comes in, we'll gladly do it, but first and foremost, equipment supersedes of poured rubber flooring, in our opinion. We launched publicly today. In our silent phase of the fundraising, we were able to secure a $5,000 gift from Dunkin' Donuts through Cadet Enterprises, and, and they will be supporting our Harlem Wizards basketball game. That's our marquee fundraising event on March 28. I'll get to that in a moment. We also received a $2,000 grant from the Plymouth Education Foundation. We've received a $500 sponsorship from Crayon College, a $500 sponsorship from Marty's Buick GMC. Rep. Matt Miratori has also given a $500 sponsorship towards the basketball game. We have spoken before the Sunrise Rotary Club. We're meeting with the BNI, the business folks tomorrow morning. We've already presented materials to the other Rotary Club, and we're basically making the rounds throughout the community for their community support. And so far, we've been hearing all good things. So knock on wood, the money will also start coming in as well. Our, our two main events right now, we have Jump for Joy, that will be at Sky Zone in Kingston next Wednesday, where they will give us $5 for every jumper if you present the flyer. That's on our Facebook page, and that will go towards the playground fund, and of course, the Harlem Wizards game. This is, this event was actually selected based on the community engagement piece of the strategic plan. We wanted to have the community come together for something fun, something educational as well, and just to have a good time by all. The Wizards are, we're gonna have their Broadway team, where we'll have alumni from the Harlem Globetrotters, who will be part of the team. They're all slam dunk champions in one way, shape, and form, and we have, right now, 20 very brave Plymouth Public School teachers and administrators, who will be led by Dr. Maestis, who will be going up against them and showing them just what we're made of. So.
That'd be worth the price of admission.
Yeah. So we, we have 850 tickets available for it at Plymouth North High School. We have already sold over 200, and we only launched tickets on Thursday. So we anticipate this selling out. We also have support from the Mirbo Inn, who has donated a one-night stay for one of our raffle prizes. Walt Disney World has given us four one-day park hopper passes to also raffle off. We'll have a 50-50 raffle, and it's gonna be a fantastic event. We are also challenging community leaders to sponsor 10 tickets apiece. Dr. Maestis actually gave us the challenge, so that we can have 50 members of the community who would not otherwise have the opportunity to come out for an event like this, to be able to come out. So we are coordinating with the superintendent's office to really make it a big community event. And as I said, you know, our, conservatively, we should, we should make about $15,000 with this event that would go towards, towards the playground. So once you combine that with our Trex Board sponsorships, our general donations, and all of the event sponsorships, we feel pretty confident that a $70,000 goal will be achieved in a four-month timeframe. So, that said, I'll pass it back to Dan for Goal Four.
And before I move on to Goal Four, I just wanted to, because I know you had asked about the technology piece earlier on. One of the things that I think is interesting, because you were talking about the Google pieces, I know Ms. Canducci has been doing a lot of trainings around it, so she can understand this very much so. At the elementary level, teachers can create what is called a classroom in the cloud, and they actually, those children are placed in that cloud, their, their way of which they log in. And the teachers can actually determine what apps the children see. So it's even more finite, so, which is really great, because the objective behind that is in the classroom. in the classroom. If you want, you know, these five students to use this app when they're doing their independent time on the computer, you can set that up. So, that's all they see. So, there are even more items of which Google allows which are great features even at the elementary level, which is a great thing. And the other one I wanted to just mention also is Class Dojo. This is something new this year. I hadn't even heard about it until one of the teachers came to me. It's a free app, but it's phenomenal because it's not only a way that you can communicate with parents, but it's, I can speak firsthand, I was talking to one of the teachers that started it, I'm going to say probably end of October, and she has seen such advances in her students in the classroom because you communicate directly with the parents. You can also look at specific skills, which actually ties into our Goal Four and that's why I wanted to segue to it because we're taking a look at how we can create greater independence in students. And that's not just in the academics, being able to sit down and do their work independently, but it's their behaviors too. And that's where that Class Dojo has really played favorably in the classrooms that some of the teachers are using it because they can pinpoint specific behaviors and then let parents know almost instantly if they wanted to, how the child's doing. So, it's and/or you can also do it as a class. Our class had a great day today, we won or earned X number of stars if you're setting in, you know, some kind of incentive up and all the parents can find out about that. So, it's a great way to communicate in a variety of ways. You can do it one-to-one with the parent or you can do it whole class. So, it's really supporting some of those initiatives around that greater independence which we're really striving for. And that also ties into our social thinking, our PBIS program because that's something that we're looking at more at grade level, is what are, what should be the expectations? The workshop model has really supported that because in order for a teacher to meet with one group of students in a small group and rotate them in, you have to, even at the lower grades, to have a level of independence, be able to go over to this center and do this work and that work and so forth. And you can go into some of the kindergarten classrooms, you'd be amazed at how organized and structured and things, how things flow. So, it really is amazing how the teachers have taken those management tools and applied them to support that model and also to increase students' independence. One of the things we're working on also is with the homework with parents, that independence. It's Johnny's homework, it's not your homework. And I'm saying that out loud so the parents will hear me say that. It's much better, and we've said this to parents that call and sign it, if Johnny's having trouble, I think the teacher would much rather know Johnny's having trouble than for them to bring it in all 100% correct, thinking Johnny's wonderful, he remembered all of those skills we learned today. And it might not be the case. So, a lot of independence is going on related to some of those pieces that we're looking at, the grade level piece. The other thing too is, and I can't say enough, I know Ms. Spicer, she has been running and supporting our Peer Helper Program for I don't know how many years now. I know she's met with other principals in the district to push this out. We've been doing it for many years and it basically, we targeted 5th grade because that's the transition to the middle school and we've increased that expectation. We've added items to them. And we emphasize, you're not, we're not asking to be the police in the school, but we're asking to support and be the role models of the school. And even on the bus and helping other kids, and again, that level of independence, that level of expectation, you're the older students, we're looking for you to act as such and be those role models for the younger kids. So, we've added that element this year with our 5th grade Peer Helper Program and it is, it's such a wonderful thing when you see kids who, they want to be in it. So, the turnaround they might have in order to be able to try to get in it because we do it three times over the course of the year, we change the groups. So, if you're not in it the first time, that doesn't mean you can't earn your way into it. But they know in order to get there, they have to themselves show that they're going to relay those positive skills that we're looking for to the classmates and younger. They go in and they help kindergarten students get on the bus, they go into the first grade classroom and help them out. They might even help, we have peer helpers that help in the front office. Again, it's giving them jobs and that expectation around that job that this is your job, you know, you have to do it and strive. So, those are some of the things that we're trying to do to, again, raise that understanding of independence both behaviorally as well as through the skills and expectations of schoolwork.
Very good. Any questions? Ms. Badger.
I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to say that I know my little cousin is in kindergarten in Indian Brook and he'll be so excited about the playground and everything like that. But is there a way that we can get some sort of flyer that tells us exactly about everything? Perfect. I just want to make sure that we don't miss the opportunity to help out in our way. So, it's awesome and everything within the school.
The timing of our presentation worked perfectly.
Yeah, perfectly.
Dr. Sorenson.
That was a really good, that was a really good presentation.
I heard on Facebook today, the Dunkin' Donuts.
Thank you. And as I listen to you all, I become, I feel I'm becoming less, becoming more ignorant, ignorant, because it's happening so fast. As I listen to the way you're teaching, how the Chromebooks are using, how the applications are happening, you know, we can hear it, but you know, I'm one of those people that's visual, I'm going to have to someday come in and watch it happen because I can't grasp it. It's hard to grasp just by listening to it.
You would be absolutely amazed because, I mean, upper grades, they, it comes inherent to getting older, a level of independence, but it is amazing when you go into a first grade classroom and see how seamlessly things work within the classroom. It's amazing. And again, it is a credit to the teachers, their management styles, how they figured out a structure to get all of that in, in the course of reading times period or math time, again, but it is, it's phenomenal. We've totally, as you saw when we gave the tour last year, we've totally metamorphosized the classroom to look more collaborative, to look more inviting versus a traditional setting. So, again, it's just every element has kind of starting to click and I think you can really see it in the classrooms.
Yeah, it's really, it's really exciting. I have a generic question to Dr. Maestis, sort of, Mr. Kostin. So, as this money is collected and the procedure for that, everybody here probably knows but me, how do we, how do we keep track of that? How do we organize it? Can you give me a little bit of outline of that?
We do not really touch these funds, these go directly to the PTA.
Oh, this is all through the PTA?
Yes.
Yes, this is a, this is an independent PTA initiative.
Okay, I missed that part, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
We are a tax-exempt organization, so any donations will receive a letter for tax purposes.
Thank you.
And along that line, I'm assuming that the plans for the playground and everything all run past Dr. Maestis' office.
What we have right now is, I mean, Sherry can speak to it a little bit more if you want, like, but it's really just a starting point which we're looking at because you need a foundational piece because it's already, I don't know how many times it's changed already.
Oh, it's already changed four or five times. But we wanted to have something visual so people knew what they were giving towards instead of just...
No, don't get me wrong, that's great. It's all really good, I just want to make sure that you're hooked into it so that if it's, because it'll be long-term equipment on the grounds, so we just want to make sure...
We'll make sure that Mr. Montron who's sitting back there will have an opportunity to sit down with everyone and talk through the issues. I know he's probably waiting for that day, but I know that we will be working with the PTA with Ms. Lawrence. I know she's very, very involved and really supporting this project to get this on the ground and I know she, she's a detail-oriented person.
Yeah.
And I can tell you that those details will then be shared with our office, so I have a lot of faith in that.
Me too. Great job, great presentation. Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Montron, now we have the facilities services update.
You feeling better?
That's a very tough act to follow. We'll give it our best. Feeling better, thank you.
Good.
Getting there. Hopefully I don't go into a coughing situation for you. This is to discuss the Department of the Facility Services Office. We're located at 10 Oak Street, the old Oak Street Kindergarten. There's myself, my assistant Frank Silver, and the energy manager Chris Hastings that you heard from last week.
Right.
The next slide is just a quick little quote from Teddy Roosevelt. "Firing away the best prize that life has to offer is the chance to work hard at work worth doing." That's what we kind of hope that we do every day. So, I want to thank you for giving us the time to do this brief presentation. What we do on a day-to-day basis changes every single day. It depends on what's going on in the building, the dynamics of teaching and the scheduling throughout the building determines who's going to do what from the custodial department. And that happens all the time. It's a department of 84 full-time equivalents. For myself, the assistant, the energy manager, we have two full-time secretaries, scheduling coordinator for facility use, six skilled craftsmen, 12 head custodians, 48 custodians, and 12 maintenance custodial floaters. We clean and maintain 17 buildings, all of the fields and grounds that surround the buildings. We prepare the capital and budgeting for the school district. We do vehicle maintenance, trash removal, deliveries. We take care of the absenteeism for all of the department, whether they're housed out of my office or in a building. The work order scheduling, facility scheduling, and utility tracking. The 17 buildings are a total of 1,607,094 square feet. We happen to have a very, very big district and it's spread out over 104 square miles. It's quite a bit. And forgive me for going so fast, but I'm trying to get through this before I, I can feel it coming. Our groundskeepers, head custodian, and maintenance staff take care of approximately 372 acres of fields, grass, and parking lots. Our entire staff is responsible for all the snow removal and ice control during the winter months. As you know, last year that was quite a challenge. This year we're basking in the sunshine.
Watch it, karma.
Thanks for the time being. The budget and capital, we've prepared and will administrate the operating budget for the district. FY '17 is $2,398,006. We've already presented that to this committee and we've already presented to this committee the capital for fiscal '17 in the amount of $4 million, excuse me, $510,156. The district has a total of 44 vehicles. That includes school buses, bed vans, truant officers' vehicles, everything. Our core responsibility for our department is our own vehicles that include six dumping utility trucks, two stake party trucks, an aerial lift truck that we use for getting the streetlights, trash compacting truck, which if you recall is one of the vehicles we're looking to replace this year in capital, a cube van, three F-150s, two vans, and three SUVs. The repairs and maintenance for all these vehicles, including the rest of the 44, are being done with one individual that works out of North High in our maintenance garage and we do sub out some of the work to specialized shops. Trash removal is a big part of the overall operation. Our truck driver is responsible for picking up the trash at all our facilities. He goes from 7:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon and that's all he does is drive in a big circle from school to school to school, emptying dumpsters, run out to C-Mass, empty it, come back and keep going. It's not particularly the job I want, but he does a great job at it and we're grateful. They also, maintenance people mainly deliver supplies and materials from one building to the other as needed. We will constantly get calls that someone's moving from one school to another or a program needs boxes delivered that were delivered out to central office that have to go to six different schools and we get someone over there, divvy it up and deliver them. The department absenteeism is done within my office by the secretarial staff. We track the absenteeisms, we place the coverage in buildings using mainly our floating staff to cover the outages in buildings that actually need them and those are mainly the smaller elementary schools that are one and two-man buildings that you have to cover on a daily basis because that's all they have. We process all the bills for supplies and materials for everything within the district for our department. Our work order scheduling is done through SchoolDude. It's a great program. We, in fact, I believe it's moving out to, it started out as a K-12 program and it's moving now out into colleges and universities because it's been tested and it does work well. To date, we have 2,263 closed work orders, 29 in process, and 138 new ones. That was as of last Monday when I was supposed to be here, but it's moving a lot, every year you see these numbers climb and it's come a long way. I mean, the guys are really doing much better at tracking their work orders and filling them out, including their time and what it would cost for that service to be done by an outside individual. Facility scheduling is done through our facilities use coordinator in our office and she also has the building scheduling coordinators in each one of the buildings. That, since its implementation, has gone through a few changes that the committee's aware of, but it's been working really well. We've tied it in this year with SchoolDude so that when buildings are scheduled, it automatically turns on the heat in the buildings, which was a problem before, somebody would rent a building and forget to tell someone else and you get there, a little chilly in the building. This kind of takes care of it. The building use fees have always been reviewed and comes in front of this committee to separate and that's really it. Thank you for allowing us the time to briefly talk to you about our department and I just want to say thank you to all the men and women of the department because they're the ones that really kind of make it happen every day. Sometimes I kind of think of them as the little unsung heroes of the district. You know, they're there every day, they have a function, they do their function. A lot of people don't really know they're there until something doesn't get done. And all of a sudden, everybody realizes, oh yeah, there was somebody there. But they do, they do a hell of a job and they're very proud of what they do and they're trying to do a good work for you people.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Great job. And I told Chris the other night, the last meeting, that we're very appreciative of all the work that's done and especially your group and Frank. Go back and tell him we appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you.
And the buildings are proof that they're all kept in tip-top shape.
I've said it before, I'll put these schools up against any schools in the state.
Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur.
And now we have the mid-cycle plan review of the superintendent's annual plan update.
Yes, tonight I have an update, a mid-cycle update for you regarding my goals and within the packet tonight, there's update statement or progress statement. The first goal that I had was to deploy, refine, and get the strategic plan... The first goal that I had was to deploy, refine, and get the strategic plan out, which is known as the 2020 Plan. That was to communicate the plan, generate quick reference documents for easy access to key information, and review the renewed plan with district's school administration. You can see at the bottom of that page, the first page, my goal progress statement indicates that the strategic plan, the 2020 Plan, is complete, and a variety of dissemination opportunities are in play, including the 2020 Plan on a page given to every staff member in the district and to every student's family, promoting on social media platforms, printable PDFs on the website. And we're using a product called Issue, which provides a readable embedded document that can easily go on websites, and the full printed version is available for limited quantities. What we try to do with the strategic plan is let everyone know that we had the plan on the page, the card that we got sent out to everybody, but we believe that the deeper, richer online version, we wanted to be something that is easy to maneuver and manipulate. So, we believe that that is something that we hope that people are going to see and be interested in, and of course, that document is part of our district planning. So, when we go through goal-setting opportunities with our staff, our administrators, that plan will be of great interest as we go through those opportunities. Goal two, was taking a look at the Commonwealth Comprehensive Full Day Kindergarten Program, and I think many of you, all of you at the table are aware of the benchmarks that we have hit thus far. I think we started with an idea, and it's grown to the point where we are preparing to take this all-the-way-to-town meeting. So, to date, the progress statement reads a full-day kindergarten model supported by the Plymouth School Committee, has been included into 2016 school, excuse me, the 2016-17 fiscal budget, fiscal year budget. To date, the school committee and board of selectmen have voted unanimously to support the budget that will allow introduction of the planned model to the community. We've had presentations at different locations, we had a community presentation here at PCIS in front of the school committee, we presented in front of the board of selectmen. We are going to see how the finance committee recommendation will come forth, we don't have that yet. And of course, like we've mentioned from the beginning, we have to get all-the-way-to-town meeting, and that's something that we know will be challenging, but again, that will determine if this actually will be successful for the community. So, that's well in play. We do have videos and information that are out on the internet, and you can see that the social media aspects of what we're doing seem to be very popular, so people are getting the information, there's some good comments online as to what people are really understanding about Full Day K and its future. So hopefully, we'll see some level of success with that. The next goal is taking a look at the whole idea of wellness in our community, and really looking at opportunities to develop resiliency models in our schools. One of the things that we have done in the district, and we've rolled this out to every elementary school in the district, and I plan to have the researchers from Beth Israel, excuse me, from Harvard Medical School and Reebok come to the committee in a short period of time to give you an update on the research, to tell you what, how this morning workout program is really impacting the lives of the students here in Plymouth. So, the goal three progress statement indicates that we have worked with Plymouth Youth Development Collaborative to introduce opportunities for parents and key stakeholders to gain information on resources available to those in need. In addition, the district has partnered with Reebok, Harvard Medical School, and Beth Israel Plymouth to introduce an early morning workout program. And also, we are gearing up, we had our first meeting last week to work on Dream Ride Two, and I know that there are a couple people at this table, sitting on the school committee's side, that I'm going to try to entice to ride with me, so we'll see how that goes. But that is something that, the whole theme with the Dream Ride is to really focus on taking care of your body so that your body can take care of you. So, that's, we're working on branding and theming and the whole student package. We're also going to partner with the 400th to really promote the beginning of this great community. So, look forward to more information on that. The next goal, goal four, is to really look at the whole concept of social media and communication, and I think that, and I've said this to Nancy just the other day, that I think we were nowhere with social media, and now we are somewhere. I think we've made an impact with the community, community stakeholders and leaders as far as, you know, just becoming in touch with what's happening in the schools. We did have significant information going out from my office in the form of a newsletter. We had information going out regarding robo-calls, but one thing was missing, and that really was the whole concept of social media. And then tonight, in your packet, you'll have some analytics that you can take a look at in the form of a pamphlet, which we will have on social media and will send out to the community so that they can get an understanding of how our social media is actually working and how we use it in the district. So, the special report really identifies that seventy-three percent of the US population is using social media in 2015, and I think when you look back fifteen years ago, ten years ago, social media had a whole different context. So, when you take a look at where we have gone and how people rely on it, and how people rely on short segments, not large bits of content, or large segments of content, I think we've arrived at that game. This report is intuitive, it gives you an idea of, from September 2015 to January 2016, we started with Facebook. Right now, we have seventeen hundred and ten followers, we have forty-eight average news likes per week, we have, which is interesting to me, and it tells you the demographic pieces of who's actually looking at Facebook. Seventy-six percent of our followers on Facebook are between the ages of twenty-five and fifty-four. So, it's graduates and parents. So, I think that's our population there. Three hundred and fifty-two thousand total number of people who have seen our posts. So, that's, it's kind of ironic how we have one point, one thousand, four hundred people from the UK have actually looked at posts that we've posted. So, I would say that this is an indication of our relationship, and I would be interested to see how this number increases between now and 2020. Hopefully, it will increase at a much larger rate. The top posts for social media for the district, Full Day K, number one. Inspirational education quote, number two. School committee approves the seventeen budget, number three. My snow day video, of course, I'm sure it was all kids watching it. And number five, school safety letter to parents. So, I think if you take a look at, this is one way for us to really indicate what that segment from ages twenty-five to fifty-four are looking at, and it does seem to be the higher level of really content information stuff. The Full Day K is pretty important. The educational quote, I don't know how that moved up into the rankings there, but obviously people like those. But, you know, the budget, the video, and the safety, those were significant messages that we really, really wanted our community to see. I think it's encouraging that our people on Facebook are listening to the budget, which I didn't really think that our budget would rise up to that level, but I think that's a good, that's a good piece. That means people are listening. If we look at Twitter, we have seven hundred and forty-three followers, thirty-three average new followers per week. If you look at the demographics, thirty-five to fifty-four, fifty-six percent, and twenty-five to thirty-four is thirty-seven percent, so you can see that we have a pretty widespread there. We have four thousand, six hundred and ninety-six average monthly visits, and we have twenty-nine thousand, three hundred plus times our tweets have been seen. So, you can kind of see how that is shaping up. Retweets, we have fifteen hundred, and Plymouth North and Plymouth South High School Deca photo, that was the number-one tweet. School thanks tip and collage was number two, and Madam Elementary School Plymouth Plantation guest was number three. So, you can actually see how Twitter is shaping out. And then, you can take a look at Instagram. We have three hundred and seventy-six followers, eighty-seven posts, and nineteen hundred-plus likes. We have three thousand, two hundred and eighty-four profile views. And then Vimeo, Vimeo is where we house our videos in the district, and we have produced from September one to today, a hundred and fifty-six videos, and we have over thirty thousand, one hundred and ninety-four plays. So, when you take a look at the different means of communication, I think if you look at covering our bases and getting more information out there, you know, I know this was a goal that we really wanted to, and I say "we" is I know the school committee was very interested in looking at how we broaden the reach of communication. I think the data here today, although it's only mid-year through the year, I think it is positive identifying that we are making somewhat of an impact with sharing information using social media. So, that's positive. Goal five, as for district continues to address the facility need at the high school level. There's a huge emphasis on getting South High School construction piece underway and actually to make progress. I would say that any update that we have tonight, the credit goes to the weather, and to be completely honest, we have an absolutely competent, unbelievably competent, construction team, and I think on Saturday, you'll have an opportunity to see the benefits of having a very functional building committee, and a very dedicated owner's project manager, and a variety of people at that table every Wednesday to make sure this thing gets done, and it's a school that will last for a lot longer than the first Plymouth South. So, with that said, that's the goal. Goal six is the study of determining cause and effect of educational practice, and this is done with the, I'm using the book David and Goliath by Malcolm Gladwell, and I know we had a little discussion, the first time I brought this up, and I can tell you that we are at chapter eight, and we've had, at our meetings on Friday, we've had very, very good discussions on some compelling stories on how people's lives have been transformed based on the conditions that they have engaged in in their lives, and I think it's been very motivating for me to lead the discussion, but I think our staff have had really good opportunities to really think how those type of strategies and those type of instances can really impact what happens in their buildings every day, and how does it impact leadership? Because a lot of this is really centered on how do we take the diverse backgrounds that we have in front of us every day, not only our staff, but our students, and our parents, our families that come together, and how do we use different strategies and working with them to inspire them to do great things? It's been a great opportunity for us, and I do believe, even though I have to remind our staff to read their chapter before the meeting, I think it's led to a great study and a great opportunity to work with our administrators on a focused effort. So, with that said, that's my mid-cycle update, and I tell you, I believe we've made some progress in what we initially set up to do.
Very good. Any questions? Pretty good. Reports?
No, it's my phone, because my mic was down, sorry.
Reports and proposals from committee members. Anybody have anything they'd like to bring up? Ms. Badger?
I have a bunch, since my plane was canceled last time on my way back. So, I have what I was going to say at the last-
Ms. Hunt did step in for you, though.
Yeah, she did. She told me that she did do my alumni association meeting, but I just wanted to put out a couple things. I know I sent out an email about the Pilgrimage Collaborative Open House on February ninth. It's going to be from three-thirty to six-thirty at the Forty-two Industrial Park, and they're very excited to show us all the buildings, so if anybody wants to go, just RSVP to that. I think the number and everything was in that email. They also wanted me to pass on the word that they are very thankful for PCIS and like everything, they know that they're right now looking for a new place, but the community and the environment that was creative, created there for them, even though they're outside of the age demographic and they, you know, wouldn't normally fit into a middle school, they felt really, just really appreciated and part of the community, so they just really wanted to make sure that I said that. So, that piece, so please pass that on.
We will, thank you.
They're really sad to have to leave, but then again, our alumni association is two-eight, two-eighteen is our next meeting, and our new chair is now Russ Bozak, Plymouth North, what is it, two thousand?
Yeah, I got an email from him today.
So, he's our new chair, which is exciting. We also, a little bit of non-school committee-related things, we've got the Pan-Mass Challenge Kids Ride, which is set for June twenty-sixth, I don't have any more information than that right now. And the, there was a traffic meeting for South, for this, at South Elementary on February eleventh to deal with a lot of the issues that we're having in traffic in the South part of Plymouth. I promised I'd pass that on, so I am doing that. Yes.
That is with the Red Brook Project cr-?
Yes, because-
Okay, so that's about the-
About the, I think it's-
Exit three?
Exit three, all the different potential lights and-
Yes, yes.
Changes to roads and stuff to accommodate what's going on over there. I think there's also the crosswalks and stuff discussion as part of it, but just to get your questions answered, I know I've heard a lot of people talk about how, you know, now to get, if you get off exit three at a certain time of day, you're like up the on-ramp, you know, the off-ramp, so it's a little bit crazy. If you're trying to take a left off a halfway pond, I know myself, you just sit there sometimes, and you're like, oh, here come some more people, you think you can go, and you're like, here they come.
I've been there.
So, you know, I think it's important that everyone comes to hear that, and, you know, it should be a good meeting, and that's it.
Good. Anybody else?
We talked a little bit before the meeting, I mean, Mr. Gordon, maybe he wants to, about the play, his hand is-
So, go ahead.
Many of us went to see Shrek, and I'm going to tell you that I was going through the channels on Sunday night, and I happened to come across a performance of Grease that was on for three hours, and I stopped and watched for a little bit, and while I was watching Grease, I found myself thinking back to Shrek, because the costumes, the choreography, the performances, the professionalism of our students, they're only eighth graders, and I was comparing it to seventh and eighth graders and sixth graders, too, and I'm comparing it to ABC, NBC, whatever it was, professional. It was, you could compare it, putting everything, putting everything in context, you could compare it. It was, we all know, it was remarkable.
It was a great show, and it's funny, my wife and I had the same comment when it was over, I couldn't believe these were middle school kids putting on this level of quality. That show was very, very well done.
To keep reminding yourself that they were only sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
Very good. Anybody else?
Well, in addition to that, I was just going to mention that I attended the Early Childhood Fair on Saturday, and it had a good turnout, at least while I was there, and a lot of vendors, school department, and parents, and, you know, I kind of walked around the Y and whatnot, and it was very well-seated, very well-attended, police, fire department were there, and so it seems to be growing every year, and, you know, I met a parent who just moved here two weeks ago, and she was very appreciative that she had this venue to scope things out. So, you know, whether it's new parents or someone moving to the district, they find it, found it very helpful.
Very good. Ms. Hunt?
I have nothing else.
Okay. Ms. Hunt?
No, I just thought of something, actually. One thing on Saturday that I had a chance to attend was the Plymouth 400th had a tailgate party for anyone that purchased license plates, and I was really proud to see a lot of our students there, the girls cheerleading, the varsity cheerleaders, actually, the freshmen were the ones that were there, were there, and they cheered on everybody as they came in. They did a big cheer at the beginning, they adapted some of the words to say Plymouth Four Hundred instead of Plymouth North, and then there were several members of the Plymouth Four Hundred Street Team- were several members of the Plymouth 400 Street Team that were some of our Plymouth North seniors. And they basically walked around and interviewed everybody. So I was really proud of our kids for that. And then the other thing is, the girls cheerleading team collected food at the basketball game this week, and they actually delivered them today, the food, to the food pantry. So that was a really, you know, nice community service learning project for them.
Good. And you had some?
Actually, I have a question. I have a question that I've been wanting to ask for like four or five weeks, and I keep forgetting. And I just thought of it. When the basketball, the glass basketball, the new one, got broken at West Elementary School, who replaced that and at whose expense?
Well, that's a little complicated, but I have the answer.
Okay.
The backboard is off. We had it taken down immediately. Our maintenance staff took it down. And I think we, you know, it was a community project, but it's our property. So what we did is we took it down. The young man who was involved in throwing the rock at the backboard, the backboard was broken, was a group of kids playing on the weekend threw a rocket, they're trying to make rock into the hoop. One threw a big rock, cracked the board. It was a sizable rock. So what happened was, the young man had to go to court. And the court decided that the child would do some restitution. So the child has been working with the recreation department and will work with us in the summer for an extended period of time to actually work that off. And then we will come up with a replacement. And we will purchase that. So, but it was a hardship situation. And it was, in order to make it work, he, the individual, along with some of the friends that were at that venue during that time, have all our signing off on ours and will work off the amount of money that it took to.
Yeah, I knew about that. I was wondering, sometimes warranties will cover even malicious damage when it comes so soon after the construction.
Yeah, that's a, I understand. And, you know, when, it's pretty clear that it was.
Yeah, okay. But sometimes they will cover it. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Building Committee.
Actually, since we last met, the Building Committee didn't have a meeting. But I pulled a couple of things off of the notes from last Wednesday's construction meeting. And Dr. Miestas referred to one of them in some detail earlier, and that is the concrete. And it was projected last Wednesday that the work would begin tomorrow, and it looks like the weather is holding for that. So February 2. Who'd have guessed it that on February 2, we'd be working on concrete? The other thing that I want to report that came out of last week's construction meeting was that we're on a critical path schedule now for turning the fields over to the Plymouth Public Schools. That is the track, the tennis courts, and the turf field. And that's supposed to be turned over to us for use on August 12, 2016. So we're into seven months, just about seven months for that to be done. And from what I read on the notes, because I wasn't at the meeting, that, and you said that, Dr. Miestas said earlier, that our general contractor is a top-quality firm, and they believe they're going to be ready to turn those fields over.
We talked about it Wednesday, which, you know, again, the fields are right on, we're on target right now. And if you drive by there now, the fields are gone and the track is gone. So I believe that they will meet it. They, seven months is a lot of time. So we have, we got to push. But they feel very confident that we will be on, you know, Principal Frye, I think she is very vocal on the timeline. And she will let them know that, you know, we have kids showing up. So they better be ready to turn them over.
The committee needs to know there's substantial penalty built into the contract if they don't make it. So it'll come out of their pocket. And so that's another incentive.
Does that include the tennis courts also?
Yes.
Okay. And I know they're going to try to reuse as much as possible, right?
They're.
Which has me concerned.
Yeah, they're not going to. It's going to be new.
They're doing demolition on that.
They are going to, they did decide to just rip it all up?
The track is all gone.
Oh, no, the track. I mean, the tennis courts.
The tennis court will be, absolutely.
Because remember, we resurfaced it, and it goes right back to the way it was.
The subsurface is cracked. It's got cracks all over it. We filled them, too, so.
Yeah. Good. All right. Good. That's it. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Dr. Gould, appointments, leaves of absence, and resignations.
Considering we met last week, we have a very short list this evening. We have just nine appointments for the coaching and advisor section.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have to delegate more things to you.
I know. It's my 15 seconds of fame.
I'll give you that two seconds there. Homeschooling plan approval.
Yes, tonight we have one homeschool plan that is on the agenda for your review and ultimate approval. It has met the guidelines set forth by the district, has been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office, and I recommend approval.
And do I hear a motion? Go ahead.
I move that the home education plan for the school year 2015, 2016 be accepted and approved as presented.
Seconded by Ms. Badger. Any further discussion? All those in favor, unanimous. The accounts payable warrant, Ms. Badger?
Whereas school committee members are provided with a copy of the cost and/or transfer and transaction summary report and warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant S020416 dated February 4, 2016, in the amount of $890,320.50 as presented.
Mr. Morgan seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, unanimous. Very good.
And before you adjourn, just want to double-check, our extended meeting starts at 8 o'clock on Saturday morning?
We're doing the tour, so we're starting what time?
Yeah, the tour starts at?
We're going to have a tour arrive at around 8:30 for some hot beverages, coffee. It's going to be a cold day. And then we're planning to go to the new site at 9 o'clock.
Okay, 8:30.
So we go to the Center Hill?
I'm a South Middle, you can drop your.
No, no, go on.
Plymouth South Middle School.
South Middle.
Oh, they're first.
We'll be at South Middle for the whole meeting.
That's where the meeting is.
Okay. In the library.
Oh, that's where the meeting is?
Yeah.
The meeting's in the library.
We thought we'd make it easy to get to.
Convenient. And we should bring hard hats? I mean, we have, we all have hard hats.
Have one, bring it. If you don't need one, if you, we have some.
We all have them, I think, don't we?
No.
I have my own from years ago.
I have several.
I don't know.
They took them away.
Are we supposed to have hard hats?
I don't know.
I have.
Typically, people, yeah, you know what?
Did I miss it?
We have some in the trailer, so.
They'll have them.
Yeah, well, yeah. I just need to let Tom know how many, we need to just make sure he has plenty. But we had them for the groundbreaking, so.
Okay. We have a full agenda?
Yes, we do.
For that day. So unfortunately, it's the whole day.
You might just leave from there and go right to.
And then on to the gala.
And then the gala, the gala, yep. Okay. Well, we're way ahead of schedule, so that's a good sign, even though we had a rocky start. Apologize for that. So without objection, we're adjourned at 8:43.